Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. It is an honor to have you with us tonight as we conduct our board meeting. We are pleased to continue the meeting in a manner that is respectful, one for, one with another, and we ask you to do the same thing. We will start out by having the President of Allegiance, if you please stand. Turn to the flag and I'll start us off.
My President of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, we understand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody, for participating. Review of the agenda, Superintendent?
Thank you very much. Welcome tonight, everybody, and our board as well, and I want to thank the Green staff for putting this on tonight and for the beautiful artwork, and thanks for letting us be here tonight. I did want to remind the board of one thing that our, we are making a flip in April, that our first meeting, our next meeting that's coming up will be a work session. We only have one meeting in April, so we're going to do a work session prior to our Budget Committee work, and then follow that the second half of the month of the 26th with our business meeting. Other than that, no changes to the agenda, Chair Johnson?
Communication to the board?
That'll take care of it.
Super. We have our student leadership report, and we're very honored to have two students with us this evening, Hannah Hyberg and Emma Keller. Turn on the mic, please.
So I have the leadership section. So last week, on Friday, RHS held the first arts assembly since being back from COVID. Our goal for this assembly was to find a way to bring recognition to a group of our students. Both Sylvia and I were part of planning the arts assembly, and we're very happy to see students involved and getting to be a part of that program. Kindness Week is just around the corner, and Leadership has been working with middle school leadership programs. In other plannings for Kindness Week, we have been working with admin to brainstorm a campus cleanup to help out some of our custodians. Prom Committee made it a priority this year to get student body input on the prom themes and decided on Enchanted Forest. The rest of the class has been hard at work, making sure that home-going senior brunch and senior sunset are being prepared for when these events come around.
And in terms of school and clubs, Drama put on the play Thirteen the Musical, and it was very successful. Our Orange R newspaper launched a new Instagram page titled Humans of RHS, and with the hopes of bringing recognition to members of the community through a student-run platform. Students had the opportunity to meet with representatives from seven public universities from around Oregon last week in the Career Center. The yearbook staff is sending their nearly 300-page book to print next week. Band is hosting a competition this Thursday and Friday. Aster Club helped Altrus International, and the Umpqua Literacy Council put on the Celebration of Literacy. In celebration of National FFA Week, the FFA Club hosted festivities all over campus. And last night, for the first time in RHS history, the Area's Robotics Team qualified for Worlds. The competition will be held in Houston, Texas on April 18th.
So on to sports. Winter sports have officially been wrapped up, and spring sports have begun. So Grady Hamilton was his weight classes wrestling state champion and paved the way for other successes on the team. Swim ended up sending representatives to the Northwest Regionals YMCA Conference in Boise, Idaho. Sylvia and I are both part of the track team, and with our track team, we will be competing next Thursday in the Crater Track Twilight, and it will be our first meet of the season. The boys lacrosse team is excited for their first competition next Wednesday at Corvallis High School. And boys' and girls' tennis teams have a match at South Medford next Monday.
And then to close, the spring is a busy time at RHS, and we are looking forward to all the activities that will take place in the next coming weeks. We're also looking forward to the involvement from the RHS community and all of our clubs and sports leadership. Thank you.
I'd like to apologize, I introduced the wrong person. We have Sylvia Ackman, I had some details that had the wrong name, and I apologize. Please accept my apology. You two young ladies are doing an excellent job. I know it's quite nervous to come before a large group and share, and I want to compliment you on your professionalism. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
It's now for our student, the staff recognition. I'm going to ask the, is the Enchanted Forest Chair Larson to help me in doing this. We're going to do the students first, and then we'll do staff. And when I go with this platform, I'll call your name, and we'll go from there. Each student that is going to be recognized tonight will receive a McDonald's gift certificate and also a plaque that they can hang on the wall and have it for permanent mental health. The first honored student that we have tonight is from Fremont Middle School, Ella Adams, a sixth grader. Isn't that exciting? Let me share with you what I have been shared. Ella is a motivated, caring, and respectful student. She always works hard and is a positive role model for her peers. Ella is exactly the type of student who exemplifies what Fremont is all about. One teacher reported that their favorite quality of Ella is her humbleness. She is extremely smart and capable, yet always willing to be the first to ask the question when she is stuck. Being a great learner is not understanding everything right away. Being a great learner is the ability to be persistent in the pursuit of understanding and enjoying the path of reaching your goal. Ella is constantly showing everyone at Fremont what it takes to be a great leader. Congratulations. The next honoree tonight is from Green Elementary School, Jean Shaffey. Thank you. Jean is an exceptional student, and Green is excited to have the opportunity to celebrate him and all of his hard work. He is always eager to learn and has excellent participation in class. He is very responsible and consistently puts forth his best effort to succeed academically. Jean's teachers and fellow students appreciate his positive attitude and his consideration for others. Jean always has a smile, and more recently, a ready laugh with a joyous sense of humor. The growth that the staff has seen in Jean is unmatched, and they are honored to be part of this, his academic journey. Congratulations, young man. Congratulations, Jean. Our last honoree tonight is Grace Harris from Roseburg High School, a 10th grader. Grace and all the family come forward. Thank you. Grace is a 4.0 student who participates in Key Club, NHS, and yearbook. She is also the team manager for the girls' basketball. Grace is a hard worker and cares about learning, a winning combination. Not only is Grace interested in completing all of her course requirements in a timely and competent fashion, but she also goes the extra mile when she would do fine without teacher intervention. Her work ethic, easygoing nature, and ability to bring a smile to those around her make her a joy to be around. She is humble and conscious of how other students are feeling and is a positive influence in the classroom. She is loyal, helpful friend to her classmate, and is quick to ask for help even when others are timid. She prioritized learning and her preparation for her future, and we congratulate you. And we're going to ask Chair Larson to give the staff.
All right, our first Crystal Apple recipient for tonight will be Christine Ostamore from Green Elementary School. So come on up and turn, all the people, oh yeah, all the peoples, I insist. All our coworkers, I like, we like a big crowd. Sorry, Lisa, I'm going to take you out. All the peoples. That's right. The following quote sent to Principal Dickover through an email from a parent clearly states why Green Elementary's Crystal Apple Award winner for 2023 is Christine Ostamore. "All through the year, Mrs. Ostamore has gone above and beyond to make my child feel seen and heard. Some specific examples include taking pictures o's way on picture day as a compromise to get him to sit still and take a good portrait for mom, and working on building his confidence and self-esteem and creating a noticeable improvement in his performance in class. Mrs. Ostamore radiates positivity and goes above and beyond for all of her students, and that's exactly what her Crystal Apple Award says. Congratulations." Really would prefer the photo have that in it. All right, well. All right, next, we'd like to recognize Sherri Jones, the Office Manager here. While everyone's coming up, I'd just like to say it is our Classified Employee Recognition Month, and so many. We, I, like, I almost have a hard time not, feel, cry, I'm known as being the crier on the board. We could not run our schools without our classified employees. They're amazing, and the work they do is so important, and often, they're the people that really reach students that teachers can't reach. So I want to just publicly thank all of them, but today, we want to especially thank Sherri Jones, the Office Manager. She goes above and beyond to make sure all students and staff have what they need each day. She is the first one on campus and is always a step ahead of what each day brings. She's a team player, kind, energetic, and has such a huge heart for all students. She is their biggest cheerleader. Green Elementary is so lucky to have Sherri Jones as their Office Manager, and her Crystal Apple reads, "A constant support and friendly face to all who enter Green Elementary." Are you the crier? We can be friends. There's always one. Criers unite.
I have some in my purse. I can get her one if she needs.
Our final Crystal Apple recipients for this evening are Mrs. Amanda Haga and Angelie Kenyon, the fifth grade teachers from Fullerton 4. Do you want to come up? Come on up with the, all the family and friends and all the peoples. All right, Ms. Kenyon and Mrs. Haga are the fifth grade team at Fullerton 4. In a display of true selflessness, this team considered what is best for the whole school and made a difficult decision to the benefit of many students at Fullerton 4. This choice to put others before themselves is the mark of dedicated professionalism. Their devotion to their students is clear as they've worked together to problem-solve, plan, and help students thrive under their watch. It is remarkable to witness the miracles they create. Additionally, both teachers are building leaders, helping with science, technology, writing, and math instruction. These two teachers make a remarkable team and leave a big footprint. It's impossible to recognize one without the other. Fullerton 4 staff members have chosen to honor and thank both Ms. Kenyon and Mrs. Haga for being great leaders, teachers, examples, and champions for kids. Congratulations. All right, the other one goes right there, Howard.
To my family and friends, we're very excited that you came out tonight to celebrate the students and the staff. We, the board, would like to extend our congratulations also. Now, we're going to take about a three-and-a-half-minute intermission. So for those of you that would like to leave, you may do so freely and comfortably. Be safe out there, because I heard there's an accident 125-mile marker on the freeway. Enjoy the rest of the day and the week. God bless you all. Good night. We'll call the meeting back to order. The next item is the Consent Agenda that's located in pages 126 in your booklet, consisting of the approval of the Consent Agenda, the minute from February the 8th to 23rd, work session and executive session, personnel actions and surplus items and gifts to the district. Let me pause right now and say how much the district really appreciates the gifts that were given to the district, and each of the person that give them, we thank you very much. I do need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any, we have a motion, a second, do we have any discussion?
With regard to the gifts, I noticed that there were two kinds of gifts. There was a substantial amount of value from the UNO Trucking and Logistics that went toward office work at the high school, which is a wonderful thing. And then the second, I see that Veronica Clark donated $250 worth of chess sets for the new chess club. And my recollection of chess sets and chess clubs is that pieces get lost, so it's a good thing to get new ones, and it encourages useful thinking skills. So I think specifically, those are very thoughtful gifts.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Are you ready for the vote? All those who favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time in our meeting, we have public participation. We have a sign-up sheet at the podium. We ask that you limit your comments to two minutes. I've asked Assistant Superintendent Lee to be the timekeeper of the editor that would like to speak tonight. Do we have anybody online?
If there's anyone online who would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function.
There'll be no participants tonight. Public participation has been closed. We will now move into our agenda tonight. Item number one is consideration, approval of the Budget Committee candidate presented by Superintendent Court.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. So we, as the board is aware, upcoming next month, we begin our Budget Committee process. And in addition to our seven elected officials, we have seven members of the community that can participate in this process. We currently have two unfilled vacant Budget Committee positions, and we have two members of our community who have shown interest in those positions. Steve Hammerson, actually is here tonight, and Mickey Hall have both requested to be presented to the board for board approval, and I put that to the board tonight to consider approving Mr. Steve Hammerson and Mrs. Mickey Hall to the upcoming Budget Committee Committee.
Let me make a note that these two Budget Committee positions term expired June of 2024.
Yep. I'd like to make motion, first of all, I'm thankful that we have two folks that have stepped up, and I would encourage these two and the other five and board members to please come to the budget meetings. They're, they're, they're very important, and I think this particularly this, this year, and we're having a work session in April, it's really key. So I would, I would make motion that we accept these two nominees.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
We have a motion and a second to accept Mickey Hall and Steve Hammerson to the open budget position on the Budget Committee. Any discussions? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda to approve is CM CG for Eastwood Elementary School Director Cheryl Northam.
Thank you. In your packet, in your packets. You'll have a memo from me outlining the particulars of this. Earlier this year, the board approved the SCAM DC method of an alternative experiment for seismic rehabilitation work to be done at Green based on the grant that we received. That moved forward, we advertised it to receive competitive proposals. Several people show up at the mandatory pre-grad conference, but we ultimately received one proposal. That proposal was from S&amp;P James, and we have had actually S&amp;P James on our last three seismic renovations, and they've done a very excellent job, so I don't, what am I going to say? Well, we're at Green. Greens had their seismic, we have. Anyway, so I have no hesitation in recommending S&amp;P James to be our contractor for the Eastwood seismic.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve S&amp;P James Construction for the Eastwood Elementary School seismic rehabilitation. I'll move to approve, James. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yes, the question, I ask this every time, but I think it's important that folks know. So over the, I mean, it seems like it's just yesterday, but over the years, how many dollars have we, we received through the seismic program? And do you remember the first project?
You mean the grants?
The grant, yeah.
We've received about $14 million worth of grants in my time with the school district, and the first one was the main gym at Roseburg High School. We've also done seismic work at Green, Fullerton, Melrose, Cupress, most recently at Fremont. This summer will be work at Jolene, and now Eastwood.
I asked that, and I think it's important that, because we are asked and comments, you know, when we run the bond, we, people say, well, can, have you gone out to try other avenues other than having bake sales? I mean, you know, I don't know how many thousands of cupcakes we'd have to sell. There'd be a lot, but we have, we have gone out, and that's a lot of money. And that gym was in bad shape. I remember having to close that down, and it was, just happened to be during the fall or winter sports and basketball games that had to be moved around. If you see, it was disastrous, so thank you for your hard work.
When is this scheduled to take place?
It will be summer of 2024.
Thank you.
Do we vote? Yes.
We do not vote.
I'm ready to vote. All those who favor say aye. Any opposed? Being done, the motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the, through the Integrated Guidance Application.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Johnson. Thank you, Chair Johnson.
Assistant Superintendent Lee, I did want to point out though, when we got the email with this, it said homework. So, so you know, we should all be prepared because it was assigned ahead of time.
Yeah, assigned ahead of time. Well, it was a um. Quite a large document, so I wanted to give you plenty of time to be able to um. Review it. Just let me start the slideshow and we will get started. Uh. Okay. All right. And we will go as quickly as we can, but there's a lot of information to share. Okay, this is our twenty twenty-three integrated application presentation. Um, in the past, we've had separate applications for our SIA grant, our high school success grant, our early intervention um, grant. Um, what and as well as our Perkins grant, our CTE grant. So now ODE has combined all of this together and. Um, this presentation will go through the background and the context. The inputs we got on the plan, the plan overview, and as far as what happens next. And during this presentation, we'll share what was prioritized in the plan. Um, explain how the plan was developed. Here additional. This was the purpose of this meeting was to hear additional feedback on the plan. And then also to seek board approval in order to move forward with applying and submitting the application to the state of Oregon. Um, our full application for the integrated guidance is due on March thirty-first. One of the steps is we need to present it to the board along with the budget for approval in order to move forward with um, submitting that application. And they integrated all of this together as a response from educational leaders and state legislators instead of doing multiple plans. And. Combined all of this process together and it was designed to reduce burden and redundancies and improve the framework by which progress can be measured over time. The six programs that were combined together are high school success and I'll give you a little more information on those in just a minute. Um, student investment account, the continuous improvement process. Career and technical education, everyday matters and the early indicator and intervention systems. High school success is for systems to improve graduation rate rates and college and career readiness. The student investment account is for meeting students' mental health behavioral needs as well as increasing academic achievement. Continuous improvement planning is a process that the district is districts are required to go through um, to. Look at and to work towards improved outcomes for students, especially students experiencing disparity. Um, career and technical education is our Perkins grant and that's improving access and participation in education and training programs. The early indicator and intervention system is used to develop, it's for the development of data data collection. And an analysis system for educators to collaborate and identify supports for students. And also everyday matters, which is embedded across the other five programs and this is in. A focus on attendance and engaging students in school. We as a district and all districts um, that are applying for the integrated guidance grants are required to go through this particular planning process. Uh, using the equity lens, engaging all of our and staff, student and families. A comprehensive assessment along with working with our CTE partners. So um. The colleges, UCC, as well as Southern Oregon University. And looking at, and we developed a four-year plan with outcome strategies and activities. Um, one of the requirements for. The plan from ODE is um, our district equity lens. This was also included in our SIA planning. Um, this is our district equity lens. It is also on our website and it is used in. For all of our decision-making and resource allocation decisions in the district. Our identified access needs. So the greatest needs in terms of equity and access. What that were determined are the need for greater access to behavioral and mental health supports for students and families. The need to reduce disparities for student focal groups, um, students with disabilities, students of color, students navigating poverty. And students navigating foster care and homelessness. Expand career and college opportunities for students. And the need for more representation of students in our identified focal groups. So students with disabilities. Students of color, students navigating poverty, poverty, foster care and homelessness. In our advanced courses or AP and our dual credit courses at the high school. And we and part of our engagement process is um, surveys. Um, community business meetings, working with focus groups, doing empathy interviews with students. Um, a priority was placed on gathering information from our key focal groups for our district. Those focal groups. Um, our largest focal group are students navigating poverty as well as homelessness and um, foster care. Um, we worked with our community partners, the Ford Family Foundation, IRE, Cow Creek Band of Umpqua Tribe of Indians. Boys and Girls Club, UCC and Douglas ESD. Part of the needs assessment, we had to complete a needs assessment. We use multiple data sources. Um, this is a list of those, some of those sources that we use. Um, surveys, attendance and discipline data, summative informative assessment data. Um, meetings with community members, surveys, empathy interviews, also um, longitudinal data provided by ODE. And the highlights of our needs assessment, we're making progress in the areas of reducing academic disparities and meeting students' mental and behavioral needs. Although there is still work to be done. Um, students with disabilities and students navigating poverty are still performing below the overall student average in math and language arts. As well as attendance and ninth grade on track. We've had multiple investments to improve support for students' mental and behavioral health. And they've proven to be successful in many ways. And that these resources and these resources are a priority among staff, maintaining these resources are a priority for our staff. Our students and our parents and families. Um, also offering a well-rounded education by continuing investments in STEM. Music and PE and these were highly rated strategies by our students, staff and families. Our plan. So keeping our strategic plan and the results of our needs assessment in the forefront, these are our high priority needs. Student um, improved support for students' behavioral, students' mental and behavioral health. Improve literacy outcomes for our students. Improve student achievement while creating positive outcomes for all students. Build aligned CTE STEM pathway options and more access to high-quality professional learning and collaboration for our teachers and and staff. Part of our. The plan, we have to identify our intended outcomes. So what we want to achieve with our plan. Increase our graduation rate for all students to ninety percent with the largest percentage of growth in our underserved populations of students. A comprehensive system to support social emotional needs for students and adults. To and will produce positive changes in school climate and learning conditions. All students demonstrate typical or higher growth in reading and math. Reduction of student discipline incidents and improve school climate. And increase access to and retention of all students in CTE STEM AP college courses and programs of study. With particular attention to students who have historically been underserved. So with the plan, we have to identify outcomes. Um, so in our budget, we have outcomes. With each of those outcomes, you identify strategies. Those strategies are laid out in the budget as well. And with each strategy, we have to tie tie activities to that. Does she have a question?
Question.
You can ask whenever you want.
Why haven't we don't hit the these strategies and we still achieve our goals?
We have to, every two years, um, we have the longitudinal data that every year we have to um. Submit to ODE. So we'll be looking at this yearly and we make adjustments. So this is a living, working document that we move through.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not going to read all of the strategies because I believe there are seventeen, eighteen of them, but um, they're listed. I'll go over a few of them. And fully implement a PK twelve multi-tiered system of support. Have rigorous instructional materials, reduce, continue to reduce class sizes, which we have done with SIA over the last three years. Um, summer transition and credit retrieval courses for high school students. A ninth grade on track team, ninth grade smaller learning, um, a culture, create a culture of safety and respect. Social emotional learning framework, high-quality social emotional curriculum. Professional learning for our staff. Remove the barrier of cost for students to access athletics for extracurricular activities and electives.
Yeah, I just want to interrupt right there. Um, I have a good friend who left our district and relocated to another state for her husband's job and her daughter just went out for their softball team, made the softball team. And the fees to participate were eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And I just want to. I'm so grateful. I don't know who I think, the board, who made this decision. I am so grateful that we have worked to eliminate all activity fees. That every kid can participate in sports without any charge at all. I think it's so critical. And uh, my friend just said. She, you know, coming from here, she just was shocked. At what that would mean for some kids to get hit with an eight hundred and fifty dollar bill after finding out you got to play on the softball team. And so um, anyway, I I think that is a strategy we're using and I think it's a strategy that's working and I'm just.
Yeah.
I think we're on the right track.
It's not just athletics. It's it's bad and other activities and that that's barrier.
Electives as well.
Exactly. That's a barrier for many students.
And this remembers parents, it's, I've had some people in the community be grateful for that and say, but don't kids have to do something? It still costs. You still have to, there's other things to buy, right? But this is definitely, and I I would just mention that we've had a significant uptick in participation across all grade levels and athletics and activities. I think probably as a result to that barrier of going away.
And that keep is only visible. I mean, otherwise they might fail.
Yes.
You know. It's something. To enjoy.
Absolutely. I'm continuing with our strategies and providing high-quality instructional materials for um, elementary schools for literacy as well as professional learning for staff. And. Provide professional learning on math best practices, which we have continuously been doing for several years with TDG and we will continue that practice. And. Fully implement a PK twelve tiered system to support for behavior. Um, equitable access for social behavioral and mental health supports. Continuing with professional learning for staff to better understand and support students navigating poverty. Uh, fully executed student intervention teams at all levels. Well-rounded education partnerships. This is with our CTE pieces, partnerships with industry leaders. High-quality professional learning and CTE STEM college and AP courses. And can continue building partnerships with local and state colleges and universities. I put some highlights in here. I didn't list every activity. The board has a copy of the entire budget. Um, for the SIA investments, the preliminary budget is almost four point two million. For the SIA grant. And this grant is focused on the social, supporting social and emotional behaviors for students as well as reducing academic disparities. With this grant, we are um. Some of the activities we have are the hiring of special education teachers and instructional assistants, skills trainers, STEAM teachers. Our PK twelve social emotional learning coordinator, Mrs. Mindy Indicott, where eliminated all fees for students. And then we also have uh, have additional teachers to reduce class sizes at all levels. So at elementary school, the middle school and at the high school. Um, our high school success grant is a little over one point four million. Some of our highlights in our new budget, we currently have one graduation coach. Next year, we will be investing in two graduation coaches at the high school. We have our ninth and tenth grade smaller learning communities. Our CTE teachers, we pay for our automotive teacher plus equipment supplies and curriculum for all of our CTE classes. Um, our high school summer school courses, college dual credit AP courses as well as two, we pay for two of our high school counselors. The Perkins CTE investment, we um, braid these funds with. Our SIA funds um, to support our CTE, our career and technical education classes. Preliminary budget is a little over eighty thousand. Um, with this, we are buying equipment, supplies, training, professional learning and curriculum to support these areas. So hospitality. Tourism and recreation and culinary arts. Early childhood education, construction, cabinetry, drafting, engineering, agriculture, welding, manufacturing, automotive and office office systems and business. So one piece of this with with the state and how they understand the success. We are going to, there are seven performance measures that we will be measured on. So this goes back to what you were requesting, Dr. Bishop. Um, part of that will be growth targets and that and then targets. Along the way, we'll have progress monitor, progress markers, annual reporting, auditing, which the business office will help with as well as performance reviews. Whoop. That's just a weird spin. There we go. And and just to let you know about the longitudinal performance growth targets and after this is approved and we move forward, we will work with ODE. On determining our performance growth targets and then those targets will be brought back to the board for approval before um. They move with our final grant allocation this summer. So we will coming back, I will be coming back to you for approval on that piece. Um, what happens next? We have our application window. We have to submit everything by March thirty-first. ODE will review it. There also is a some, a separate quality review team that reviews ODE's work. And then they come back to us in case there's any updates or things we need to change. And then they they will approve the application and then it'll come back to you to look at those targets. And then I'll bring the final grant application. After it's been approved by ODE, it comes back to you again for another approval. So you'll see this a couple of times. That's it. Question.
Will they OD, will they adjust some things if they think, well, we're not so sure on this?
Um, what they've done, this is the first time with the integrated guidance, but I can tell you, for instance, with SIA. Um, they did not make any changes to our budget this last time. If there. If there are any questions about any of the information or if we may have. They need a little more information about one activity, they'll come back and ask for some more information, but these are non-competitive grants. So um, they're just looking to make sure that you've done your due diligence um, on gathering all your information.
Thank you. I I, well, one more question on the longitudinal. Longitudinal. How, how um. How confident are we that in a year's time, we're gonna see? You know, the up. Upswing like that.
So the growth targets are around third grade reading proficiency, ninth grade on track, regular attendance. Our four-year on-time graduation rates and our five-year completion rate. So these are things that we are already looking at with our school report card every year. So we measure these things. Um, to move forward. So our goal is to make growth every year.
One of the challenges with some of the measures is that they are not cohort-based. And so that gets a little tricky when you say, well. You've got X amount of kids and this, let's take ninth grade on track. And we're going to measure that number against next, you know, the eighth graders next year. And so one thing that we do on our side is we look at that longitudinal data as well to next great track on track with the high school, taking a look at tenth grade on track. And that gives us oftentimes a little more actionable information on how we're maintaining. So longitudinal data can sound like a good idea. We, I'd rather track the cohort than the target. That makes sense. Um, and so uh, although some of these measures are longitudinal in terms of. Measures, point in time measures, you know, third grade reading. Well, if you're doing third grade reading next year with a different group of kids. You can call it longitudinal data, but really we're looking, I'm more interested or as interested, I like the trend data. That tells us something. But I think we have to pair that with cohort data long term.
But will that be included in our? Reporting to OD?
Most of the longitudinal data is that point in time data on measures, if you will. And so what that's looking at is sometimes OD wants to look at that to look at. To gauge kind of your instructional practices at third grade. Where oftentimes we're, I'm also concerned about, are we maintaining the investment and acceleration of? Where oftentimes we're, I'm also concerned about, are we maintaining the investment and acceleration of learning with kids, right?
Right.
They're interested in more of the longitudinal point in time data. And so we're going to pair that with some of the cohort data to say, hey, we made some really good investment with these ninth graders. Let's make sure we're continuing that moving forward to graduation. We'll do both.
Great. Thank you. I will add here.
First one, it was fifty-three page report that you made. Which was, you said, to simplify the district's reporting. Did that mean you didn't have to make separate reports on all of the seven or eight other programs?
Correct.
So it's just this fifty-three page.
Well, actually, the whole application is going, this is the summary of it. So the whole application is actually longer, but.
Okay.
And I'll just jump in here, sorry. Um. I gotta be careful what I say about O D in the meeting. I think the intent was good about integrated guidance, but I will just say, I just want to tell uh Michelle how much I appreciate that she was navigating. Um, smart sheets and all this. I mean, I think the intent of integrating guidance is good, but. I want the board to understand how much Michelle worked on this and texted me at eleven o'clock at night and being there early in the morning to put all this together. Was remarkable. You did get a summary report on this. It was O D's intent to say, we're gonna make this really easy for you on this one report. And um Michelle wouldn't complain. It's not her nature. I complained. It's in my nature to OD. Um, but this was a bit of a, this was, this was um. A significant amount of redundancy and extra work and so great job on that report.
And I had sort of the same issue, I think, that was just mentioned, the page fifty has how the state understands success. And it tends to be sloping lines. Whereas. If we hire two new guidance counselors. Of the measurement of whether that works or not is not going to show up in these charts. So that's going to require sort of anecdotal. Evaluations about how that does and and we're counting on you guys to make.
Yes.
All sorts of maybe not published evaluations of what works and what doesn't work.
So I have to also be careful because. Sometimes, many times I don't understand O D's thinking. But and this may be for a conversation for another meeting. But building this in, and I'm not sure how the thanks, but the elephant in the room, COVID. We know. That it it had a negative. Impact, correct? And so um. What impact has it, what did it impacted it have on you building this? Set, fair enough?
Yes, fair enough. And with our, previously we had our S I A plan, which we are, are still in our third year of and the. The focus of the S I A plan was. The social, emotional and behavior supports for our students and really addressing those academic disparities and that came. Right in the middle of COVID and as we've come out of COVID, so. Like the last during the work session when we shared with you, um. Melissa and I shared with you all of the supports that we've put in place in the last couple of years for our students. That's still built into this plan. So those supports to continue moving forward and also help with those academic. Games that we that need to happen.
I'll mention just one of the quick thing, uh and this is uh not conspiracy theory, it's not intended to be um anything but a state, just a statement, I guess, but. When we got going on this and Michelle and I met and we're looking at some of this, um. This is, so the the grant right now is non-competitive. But we built our plan as if it was competitive. And we're going to track this as if the grant will be competitive one day. I have no idea if it will be competitive. I mean, we don't have any indication it will be. But I think it's important for people to realize that we're go, we are grateful for these funds and. We'll have to balance being patient with the expectation to move the work forward. And um I I. I don't, sometimes in non-competitive grants, there gets to be a certain element of, you're gonna get the money anyway. But we're, we're approaching this as a competitive grant. And I think that that mindset is going to be a benefit to what happens with our kids. It'll be a benefit for them. And if things ever do change and the legislature could certainly make a change that the grants were competitive. We'll be in a spot where we don't have to worry about how we've tracked the data, what are outcomes are. And I don't know that it'll ever happen. But I think it's important for the board to know that we were, we've been thoughtful to try to. Build a plan that works for kids and to make sure we're meeting the board's strategic measures. And that plan that you put together and that's what really this has been based on. And but we are approaching this as if it needs to be, it needs to be actionable. And competitive in terms of our approach. So that if in the event it ever did become competitive, we would be right in in the market for that.
Yeah.
Um, are the distribution of the funds to the different areas based on our needs or are these classified from O D's? You have to use a percentage of. Versus the the S I A versus the H S.
So we receive specific allocations from O D E for each of the grants. So next step is to request approval from the board.
Would the board chair will entertain a motion to approve the district integrated guidance application as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrot.
I like to.
The poll, of the poll.
Yes, when it's ready to.
Thank you.
Before I submit it, I will get it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to co-sign uh all the compliments that have been given to Michelle thus far and add mine to it. Job well done. Congratulations. We do appreciate it. Next item on the agenda.
I just, I just wanted to say too that I, uh going through this, you know, fifty-three page document. You know, I I looked at Michelle or and I talked to Michelle, I said. So you must have worked on this. This is like a doctorate thesis, you know, this is. So much that, you know, you had to do along with being a. Just a superintendent, assistant superintendent, dealing with all the other things that you do, so um. Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of it. Is very wordy that, you know, kind of like word salad. Where you you think shouldn't O D be able to maybe, you know, condense a lot of things that. They're requiring, but I think you're answering all of it they're demanding. And so based on those yeah standards, we should be in good shape. And this is, this is one of the reasons why we're moving Dr. Joe Weber. To the district office. To, I I don't know how you get all this stuff and I I don't, it's just crazy. Many of you guys are talking to each other at eleven o'clock at night, eleven thirty at night. Um, anyway, hopefully it'll help us on its way for you.
Yeah, well done. We do appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the annual renewal and non-renewal of contracts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year per O R S. We're going to ask the Mr. Freeman to present this to us. And I'd like to make sure that we understand we can do this with one motion and one vote.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Uh, I would like to just give you a little background on some of this. What's in front of you today, they've got a statute. Once a year, uh prior to March. Order of directors mandated by the statute to renew or not make the probationary contract license. Employees, that's your teacher. Statute directs school boards to officially recognize promotion of probationary teachers and administrators. Uh, probationary two, probationary three, probationary three to contract. And to extend um current contracts. Proposal for you to consider tonight, recognize licensed staff. Through the evaluation process of criteria for advancement. Please consider the staffing proposal.
The the chair will entertain a motion to approve the annual renewal and non-renewal of contracts for twenty-two year.
I so moved.
Do I have a second? All second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carrot. Thank you very much. Uh, we uh. Realized that there's a lot of background work going on by Dr. Freeman. To put all this together and we again want to thank you very much for your hard work and your due diligence to procedures and policies. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Johnson.
Okay, uh. I have a short report for you tonight. First of all, start with some beautiful kids. This is uh Dr. Sustay, one of my favorite times of the year. Um, we have a couple of things to share tonight. Um, appreciate the comments tonight already about our classified employees. We, I echo Director Larson's comments, um. We are really so grateful for our classified employees. School simply cannot function the way we function, our care for kids. And um everything from making sure kids get fed. To making sure we have buildings that are um functional and children taken care of. Um. We are very grateful for our classified employees and want to um. Thank them and wish them uh our our best and classified appreciation week, this week. I want to give you an update real quick on where we're at with some hiring. Um, in that process, we have an athletic director and two assistant principal positions. That we are hiring for. Um, the R H S A D position, an A D position or an A P position or assistant principal's position at the high school. And another assistant principal position. At Joe Lane, the part to some administrative moves that um happened about a month ago. Um, we are still in the process of accepting applications and I think it's important to let the board know. That we have a um quality um pool right now of applicants. There uh the shortage of educators is a real dilemma in public education right now and it's not unique to Roseburg or Douglas County or the state of Oregon. Um, and so that is something that we um have experienced, are experiencing, but we're grateful to have a quality applicant pool in these positions. Applications close uh on the seventeenth of March and we have um a little bit of a delayed hiring process. Uh, we'll be interviewing um mid-April thirteenth and fourteenth. Because we are uh working with Hillsborough School District and our new up uh R H S principal for next year. David Vickery, um superintendents are negotiating when to let people participate. And so I work with Mike Scott, the superintendent in Hillsborough and uh Mr. Vickery will be here the thirteenth and fourteenth and will take part in the um R H S. Principal positions and so we'll be hiring those mid next month. Um, the, I provided the board this week, uh um a document with a little bit of information on the swatting incident. Um, February twenty-first. Um, I will just give a a brief report here. Um. We've been working with staff and our students and our families, law enforcement, first responders, other superintendents across the. County to just try to better understand. You know, what happened, how we did and do a kind of post-incident analysis. And um a couple of takeaways I'll mention tonight that we're really grateful for our first responders. Um. In this incident, our first responders definitely include our staff. Who are with our kids. They are oftentimes, as uh Director Cotton said multiple times. And these kind of incidents, the first responders are our staff who are their first working with kids. And we had, we had many staff that were um, you know, prepared to act if this was a real emergency, but we want to thank our first responders. Um, law enforcement officials who did respond quickly. Uh, generally speaking, our protocols we put in place for lockdown in this situation were effective. There are areas that we can continue to improve and get better and there's uh definitely areas that we are going to work and to strengthen. Um, we do need to work with uh kiddos and staff uh as well as our families in terms of what to do. When there is an emergency situation. The first inclination, and I understand this as a parent with children here, is to get to the, get to the incident. But that uh can lead to a delayed response by law enforcement and also create um. Challenges in terms of uh managing parents when we're trying to focus on the threat. Um, we have a need to, what was really a uh glaring in this incident is we don't have a standard. Language for how to respond to a threat. Um, words like lock in, lock down, secure mean different thing to different people in different departments. And that's an area across the county we need to get consistent on. And so we are going to be starting up our safer together for those of you who are here, partnerships again. Uh, that's something our district just took the lead in doing and uh we're going to kind of start on that standard response protocol language that should be helpful for us, so. Um. So there's work to do there. Uh, we did want to mention too, we were disappointed to have to cancel our winter gathering. Um, but it is rescheduled. Uh, we will meet next Monday at the high school. Five thirty to seven, want to invite our community to join us there. We're thankful for the Ford Family Foundation for providing food. And books and it should be a great event and for other community partners who will be there. So look forward to seeing the board there as well. And then as mentioned tonight, Sylvia mentioned tonight. Um, just a highlight of one particular area of the district. Uh, R H S had three robotics teams that did compete in the state tournament. I think it's the first time, Brad, we've had three, I think, right? It's the first time we've had three. So all three teams made it to the state tournament, which is great. And Team Aries, uh it was was mentioned tonight, uh qualified for the world championships in Houston, Texas in April. And um, so we want to give a shout out to um Ira Weir and uh our staff that's been helping there, our kids and families doing a great job. Um, we've got some world-class kids and we're cheering them on in Houston next month. Thank you.
Are there any questions on the superintendent? May not, thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Um, for the, for the winter gathering, since this is one of. Michelle said, one of our community standards that we're meeting for. Uh, engagement, community engagement, is there been? Um, anything in the paper? Can we do anything in the paper to, you know?
Yeah.
Let people know.
Yeah, we have. It's been, actually, we're grateful for our partners, uh News Review, K Q B and others have done a really good job promoting that. We did send out another press release. About that and I saw that in the paper. Um. Uh, talked to Kyle Bailey, I've been on the radio talking about it a little bit. We try to jump on the radio again Monday morning just to. Let people know. It'll be a great event. We tried to do it at a time where our families can come and not have to worry about dinner that night. Bring your kids with you. There's things for the kids to do. Uh, Chelsea's set up a photo booth for families just to, it should be an enjoyable event. But the intent of it is to really get feedback on, you know, what we want in our community, what do we want our schools to continue to focus on? How do we strengthen our community through that? And and really it's, the idea is to get the kind of data where we can make tweaks and also share with the board. Is you think about your strategic plan vision over the next couple of years to. You know, developing those maxims, those things of, hey, we are committed to these things. So we're hoping to have a, we had um about two hundred and fifty people signed up for the last one. Um, you never know who's, does that mean we'll have five hundred or two hundred? We're not sure. Um, so, but we will host a spring event as well. Um, so and we'll continue to to try to do what we can do to promote this event at the high school on Monday.
I saw it advertised on K P I C, so.
Okay, yeah.
Is there anything that we, as you know, board members can do? To, you know, serve there or?
For sure. Uh, this is something that, you know, kudos. I wish Chelsea was here tonight, but she's uh, she's really taken the lead, the the um. Really, the the, I will take the heat if it doesn't go well, but it's gonna go well and then we're gonna give Chelsea all the credit because she's done a great job with this. I I think it's important for the board to be there to participate just to see, she has a list of ways to be involved from being a greeter to. To handing out books and and helping and and I think, I think in so much as the community can see the board. Present there and just participating, being at a table to listen. I think it hones our perspective on on, you know, where our community is at relative to the things they are excited about, want to continue to see in our community with our school. So uh I would just reach out to Chelsea. She has a list of volunteer assignments I've been given to already, so. I'm just gonna go where she tells me to go that night.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the February twenty-first incident, have we gotten any feedback from law enforcement about? Was there any progress on figuring out who it was that made these calls and caused all this disruption?
Well, I believe it's um, I have some information, but I think the the FBI was taking. The lead, but not necessarily. The lead, but not necessarily at the, at the pace that law enforcement was hoping for. The call came in from out of state and then was routed out of country. And so there's been um, so it appears that could have been, you know. We don't live in the world of landlines anymore, and I think that makes things a little more difficult. But um, there uh. I think our local law enforcement realizes the disruption. This uh, I would just say, this is going to happen again. And um, uh, and it's unfortunate. There's been communities where this has happened multiple times in a week. And it's a, it's a massive disruption to kids. I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but. We had nine hundred students out at the high school. So remember, this happened on a Tuesday. Wednesday was a snow day. And on Thursday, we had nine hundred students out. It was, at the high school particularly, was pretty traumatic uh, for some kids. It was, it was not. Um, it was reported in a newspaper that this was like, that was a hoax, it was no big deal, but for, for people who were there. It was, it was pretty significant. Um. So I continue to, you know, try to. Plead that they'll take it seriously. I think when you get to federal agencies, gosh, I feel like I'm talking badly about government this tonight, but. I am, sorry. But I guess the federal agencies, sometimes these things don't carry the weight of um. That I, that sometimes I think they deserve around the disruption, and so uh, it, the, I think it's been turned over to the FBI to work on this, and the latest I heard. I don't want to speak for law enforcement, was they were working with the FBI. At a pace that was maybe slower than they'd hoped.
Thank you. Moving forward, it is time for the individual director report. Uh, Director Shiffliff.
Me, Nate.
Director Lee. Director Larson.
I'm good, thank you.
Director Curtis.
I'm nothing to report today.
Director Cotton.
Sorry, um, I had the pleasure to go to the High School Musical. I don't know if any of the other board members got to. But I was a little bit nervous. Because in the press release or wherever, I, I, I've read it somewhere, I think. Um, talked about their older folks may have a problem with some of the punchlines of things. I didn't. Maybe because I worked with kids for so many years, but those kids are amazing. They, that you could just, the amount of time, I mean, they were just so good. And, you know, we have a lot of talented. Kids, you know, you talked about robotics, but I'm looking at the mock trial team, our bowling team, and I was really pleased to hear. That the mock trial team is going to be. Uh, a class next year elective. Um, it's going to be kind of cool to grow our own. Books for courts, right? Um. Talk about, I, I, during the um. Swatting incident, whatever you want to call it. I was upset when it kept coming across as a hoax. It ended up being a swatting incident, but I think that. I, it, we needed, we need these drills for the real world. And so I think overall they did a good job. Um, the wrote, the high school shooting in two thousand eight, my oldest daughter was senior, and I've talked about this uh. Uh, meeting we had, it still affects her. And so I can understand. How it affected those high school kids. And then I just want a really quick story about um. Classified folks. Um, this will be my sixtieth year, believe it or not. I started a little, as a little first braider at Riverside Elementary, nineteen sixty-three. And on each side of Winchester, or on Riverside, on the west side and on the north side, there was mills. These big week one burners, you can probably, and the little pieces of sawdust that they would cut off, get in your eyes. Somehow, I ended up in a med pedal. So, you know, first grader in a med pedal, I don't, I was strenched. My dad was a timber follower, my mom was home with two kids. So I got taken down. To the office, and I could see Mrs. Gordon, she was a school secretary, her beautiful white hair. And around the corner sat Mr. Roy E. Crane, emphasis on E, remember, the high school or the grade school principal, he was. Amazing. They took me down. To the boiler room, wrapped me up in a blanket, and I can see my, I can still see my clothes hanging up drying. And the, the lunch brought in, but those. When you're a little first grader, that's a traumatic. Traumatic, so uh, I have always appreciated. Uh, classified folks. My mother spent almost just a few months shy of working thirty years as a, a lunch lady and the majority at Joe Lane. And she finally retired at age seventy-five. She told me last week she thought she could still do it. She's going to be ninety, so I'm not sure, but uh. Uh, good job on the classified boys. Thank you.
You may, you may recall that when they were building the Boys and Girls Club. They found logs covered in mud, and they were digging down to get the foundation. Director Bishop.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the, the chair, I want to thank each of the directors for your input, your time and your due diligence to the work that has been done. If there be no other business before the committee tonight, I'd like to announce that our next session will be a boardwork session. Will be held April the twelfth at the district office. It will be available at Zoom. It will start promptly at six P M. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a great day.